All right, good evening. Tonight is April 16th. It is 6:30 and I'm going to call the Board of Selectment meeting to order.
I'll call Finance Committee to order. Okay, first order of business is approval of minutes from our March 26, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion second.
Motion second. All in favor? Hi. Hank just went off at that exact moment. Hank, I don't know if you can come off mute and vote? Can I just circle back to him?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next order on the agenda is the joint meeting with the Board of Select Persons and Dudley-Chelton Regional School District. Call them up.
Good evening.
What do you think? Introduce yourself, Mr. Lamarche, please.
I'm sorry?
Could you please introduce yourself?
My name is Stephen Lamarche, Superintendent for Dudley-Chelton Regional School District. But also in the audience, I'd like to introduce the Chair of the School Committee, Ms. Kelly Zella, who's to the right. Also in the audience is the Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Joseph DeSantis. He's sitting right there. And then also we have the Director of Public Facilities, Public School Facilities, and Joe Karen, who's sitting right there.
Welcome.
Okay? So this evening...
Thanks.
Do I need to do it again?
No.
Okay. All right. So this evening, we have a couple of things to present to you. I know FY26 is the main course here, so you have a presentation on FY26, which I'll go over. But the other thing, too, is that we appreciate the support of the two communities. We did through a capital improvement that was done in September of 2022. We had an architectural review of all of our schools. And so we're bringing that report to you as well. That's the Bined Report. That is a very detailed report. And what we did is we worked as a district under the leadership of Joe DeSantis and Joe Karen and the Capital Safety Subcommittee of the School Committee. We worked on trying to condense, take the condensed report and try to... And Mr. Joseph Karen, Mr. DeSantis will do an introduction. Mr. Joseph Karen will do a presentation on that. But I'm here to work on the FY26, which is the colored sheets that you have. I do appreciate the attendance at the joint meeting with the Select Board Finance Committees and the School Committee back in January. I think it was the end of January. The good news is not much has changed from that report. And I will touch upon the governance budget and I'll touch upon the House budget that came out today. And there was good news in that House budget, but it's not reflected in this report today, okay? I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah.
So I'm not going to go through slide by slide, but this is for you guys to keep. So what I was going to actually do, you know, in the spirit of time, is in good time efficiency, is I was going to ask you to turn to page, slide 10. Slide 10 is the assumptions and risks. So looking at the assumptions, these are annual risks for us and we've had some changes to some of these and that's what I'll talk about. Is everyone on page, slide 10? Okay, so we always worry about chapter 70 for years, chapter 70 per pupil. We are a district, we're one of 219 districts in the state that is called held, hold harmless, which means we get minimum state contribution. We get the minimum state contribution. That's usually a dollar amount per student. And it's typically been $30 per student. So if you take our students and add it up, that's not really a lot, an increase for district size, for our annual budget. Last year, it ended up at $104, which was substantial for us, made a huge difference for us. The governance budget this year started at 75, $75 per student. And the House budget that came out today was $150 per student. Okay, so I don't want to land on that today. It's as fresh as fresh can be. But that's a sizable increase in chapter 78 for us as a district, which we've been asking for, especially as a whole harmless district. And I want to be clear to you and to the voters that when that budget gets finalized, if that changes the assessments, that's what we... Those are the assessment sheets that we changed in the middle of the summer for the town. So will it change from now until the town meeting? Probably not, because we have to wait for the Senate to work on that. And the House continues to work on their budget as well. But it's, to me, what it really should do for you, as it does for me, is it sends a really good message that the state is hearing those of us that are in hold harmless, that we need more than the $30 ahead. We need more than $60 ahead, which is what we received three years ago. So, or more than $104, so 150 is a sizable increase. So that first assumption is I think we're going to be okay with our chapter 70 funding for this year. As it says, if not more, which again will come out in the, we'll call it the assessment laundry, once the state budget is actually passed, if it ends up on $150 per student. And will obviously positively impact our two communities, okay?
If the Senate passes that, what's the total impact? Have you guys figured out?
It's roughly 300,000. Let's, I don't want to over exaggerate.
Yeah, no, I know.
It's between $200,000 and $300,000 increase in chapter 78 for us as a district, which will, again, wash out percentage-wise for Charlton and Dudley.
Yeah.
Okay? Good question. The next, excess and deficiency is stable for FY26. That is, that is stable for us. Keep in mind that we do use the excess and deficiency to balance the budget, so we have targeted $1.1 million to balance the budget. Excess and deficiency really should be at some point in time set up in such a way that it really helps pay for one-time costs, like capital improvements and things of that nature. Dudley-Chelton has not had that luxury. We've had to use it to offset our operating budget every year. Excess and deficiency is when you take everything you have left at the end of a fiscal year and you put it into the excess and deficiency account. We use it to help offset the operating budgets year over year. That's not good financial policy. I'm sure you know that. Just like a stabilization fund shouldn't be offsetting an operating budget for a town. It should be used for emergencies, for one-time fixes, things of that nature. We're not there yet. At some point in time, we would hope to get there, but we need more state support as we're seeing come for us to be able to get there, to help pay, offset some of the costs for the capital things, items that you're going to see, okay? School charter assessments, looking at the House budget, there are a little, there's some little adjustments here and there. It's about an $80,000 swing in some of that, so we're going to take a look at that. It's not, it's something that I think we can absorb within our operating budget. It's nothing that's really going to impact you in your assessment. But we just, we have to pay attention to what that is as well, okay? But I think that's stable. That's the assumption we're making. Keep in mind with our supply accounts, we've been level funded for the past fiscal years, '21 through '26. The only change is that we have designated, and there is a slide in here, to reflect that we're designating the Amazon money we are receiving, thank you, for buying high-quality instructional materials for curriculum improvement within our schools. So that is something where you're targeting for that, but we do need to revisit our supply accounts at some point in time, moving forward, because they've been flat. Technology's been flat for the last several years, okay? And then reimbursements remain stable for FY26. We can basically check this box at this point. Transportation, that is another one. The Senate worked on their FY25 surtax... surtax monies, and they moved transportation to 100%. There's some complexity in there, because FY26 in the House budget has it 100% as well, but the 100% for the House budget for FY26 includes the FY25 surtax money. So it's not, it's not fair for me to explain that we're guaranteed to get 100% tonight. I can't, can't land on that for you, because it does involve the FY25 supplemental budget, which is the surtax money. So if we get there, that'll be the first time in the history, or at least my young history in public education, that regional transportation was reimbursed at 100%. Which, again, if that is true, that will change the assessment for the two towns, but we have to wait and see that go all the way through. Because last year, I think the House was at 95%, and it ended up closer to 89% or something of that nature for last year. So it does adjust. And keep in mind, that reimbursement is a trailing, all reimbursements are trailing reimbursements. So it's based off of this year's, next year FY26 will be based off FY25's transportation costs, so it is trailing, okay? Any questions on that? Again, good news.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hope it meets fruition, that's all.
Mr. Lamarche?
Yeah.
Excuse me through the chair. The school choice, I see that you say stable. Does that mean that the numbers that are available for school choice are staying at what they always are?
Yeah, we've seen a little bump up in school choice coming in.
We have, okay.
Yes. Yeah.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yes.
Are we still seeing kids come through the district?
We see kids come in, we see very few go out.
Okay.
For school choice.
Okay.
Okay, and same thing for charter. We don't see a lot for charter.
Okay.
And most of the school choice that goes out is very closely tied to a family. So if I'm Stephen Lamarche and I work in Dudley-Chelton and I live in Methu and I bring my kids to Dudley-Chelton for school. Okay, that kind of thing, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. So I'll bring your attention to slide 11, areas of specific focus. These are items that are very important for us and play into our fiscal budget, and especially this year. Every year, class size is an important thing. We do extremely well to try to look at class size. There is a slide in here that has class size and it's closest parity I've seen in the six years that I've been here, between what I would consider for the town of Dudley Schools and for the town of Charlton Schools. That's fantastic. Usually we're trying to shift staff. Usually one grade may have five or six more per class, per average. This is the closest thing to parity that I've seen in the six years I've been here, which makes budgeting a little bit easier. It doesn't mean that we won't have a elementary teacher teach a different grade next year because of the class size, the population moving up or changing, but we have very close parity in our class sizes going into next year, as of today. Things, obviously people can move in tomorrow. Contractual obligations. We negotiated our teachers' contract, which is the largest contract around for our two communities, as well as for us. I am here tonight to share with you that we successfully ratified a contract with our teachers. And there was a lot in there. I don't want to share all of the details, because it ended up being about 26 pages worth of language and other things. And so if I gave you the numbers, the numbers would be a false advertisement for what the actual work is. It's also in the language that's in there, too. But we were able to negotiate the contract and I am very pleased to share that the association has agreed to what we budgeted for next year, a 3% increase for next year, which is really good for FY26, for us. And then the other bullet on the top there is employee benefits insurance. We've been hit very hard with insurance costs, insurance premium costs, insurance increases. We were able to, again, negotiate some of that with our association to share some of that cost. But we're still in a place where we're in a little bit of a deficit from prior years, but we're really working on the numbers to try to, again, make our budget FY26 palpable for you as a community and for the town of Dudley as well, okay? And I'll touch upon that. Areas where we have what I would call modest increases, for you and me and as a household, we wouldn't consider these increases as modest. We'd be shocked by them, but utilities costs. Keep in mind, about three years ago, we ran into a lot of problems with some of these, because we were up for contracts. And some of those contracts were very big for us to try to get into fiscal year '24. But because we have a multi-year contract on utilities, we're working on utilities, we're also working on solar for our middle school roof that was replaced at Charlton Middle School and also Dudley Middle School. We see these as being what I would call modest increases, meaning we're absorbing them within the fiscal year budget planning that we have, the lines that we have, without trying to highlight them in such a way that we need more money from our two communities. Same thing with transportation. We're in a multi-year transportation contract. That was something that we were shocked at a couple of years ago. We're even more shocked now, because the transportation costs for school districts has skyrocketed, 30% increases, 35% increases. It is, there are very few vendors who actually supply transportation for public schools. This is something that the legislators are supposed to look at for us as public school districts, to see if they can try to help us out. But again, the numbers, I'm seeing districts who are settling on contracts now, this year, are like a 30% increase in their transportation costs. We don't have that. It's built in.
So that multi-year contract ran out, or?
For us? No, we're in...
No, we had a multi-year contract.
Yeah, we're good. We're in a multi-year contract. We're in a five-year, basically a 3++ contract.
Yeah.
So we're good for the next couple of years, without question. We're in a good spot for that. But I'm seeing other districts and other communities go out for transportation bids. And first of all, sometimes only one vendor is bidding on it. And then the costs are 30, 35% increases on their costs for transportation.
Didn't I see the, the State House did something for transportation? They bumped it up.
We were just talking about regional, for regional schools, we do get reimbursement.
Yeah.
A town school does not get reimbursement for transportation. So their stuff, they have a 30% increase. So yes, the more we pay into it, but again, it's a lagging reimbursement. So if we went out for a contract with a 30% increase, we don't have the funds and reimbursement from the prior fiscal year to help absorb the 30% increase to that.
Through the chair. I know when we did go through that contract for transportation, we had increased our, our contract was higher than we were expecting it to be originally. And now it sounds like anybody that's going through it now is even higher than where we were by a lot.
Almost double.
But one of the reasons that our, that we needed to look at a higher number was because we were told by the transportation companies that they were having difficulty hiring and maintaining staff. And yet we're still, as parents in the district, getting messages that there's not drivers. Is there any movement on that? Is there any reconciliation of, kind of, we're in a multi-year contract, we don't really have a lot we can negotiate, but we're still getting those messages?
I know it's going to be hard to hear, but this year is better.
I know it is better, yeah.
Because of the personal experience. But what, the main reason why some of those are changing is because they, the transportation company doesn't have a slew of 20 drivers waiting. And these are, many of these are sick calls.
Okay.
And when there's a sick call, they do have a couple of spare drivers that they fill those, but they can't fill, if they get nine in a day, they can't fill all nine.
Okay.
Sick calls. So it's not a lack of hired drivers, per se, and also their sub-drivers. It's just we don't have enough to cover every time somebody, they call in sick.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate that information.
Yep. So that's a bigger difference for us, because we do, we get a weekly report from them on their drivers, who's out sick, all that kind of stuff. So we're seeing the same thing that you're experiencing.
But we tried to put kind of stop measures and stop gaps in place, so that that wouldn't happen.
Yeah.
And it's not necessarily that there isn't enough staff. It's just that they can't cover the sick.
But they have enough to cover a, let's call it a marginal, if they're running a business too, a marginal amount of drivers that call in sick. But we've had times where nine to 13 drivers have been out sick.
Okay.
And we, they can't cover that.
Okay.
It's a lean operation, and there's a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's a lean operation, and I think...
It is.
Defending it, it's reducing our costs in a way as well.
Okay, thank you.
And then out of district tuitions. A couple of years ago, we brought forward, if you recall, OC, OSD, Operational Services Division for the State of Massachusetts, increased out of district tuitions by 14%. It's just unheard of. And then the following year was another 6, around 6%, so it was almost 20% increase in out of district tuitions. Now, keep in mind, an out of district tuition could be upwards of $300,000 for a student with significant needs. So 14, 20% increase over two years, that's a sizable increase. This year, we were in a position where OSD did not permit that. They, it was roughly a 2, 3-point... Like a 3.2, 3.4% increase this year. So again, that's within our budget. We're not, we're not advertising that as a need for our communities to support us even more, so we're able to accomplish that, okay? All right, so the next slide, slide 12 is the class size. Again, this does reflect our, again, the best parity I've seen. Keep in mind, pre-K is because there's double set, there's a half to two half-days, that's why pre-K, we do not run pre-Ks with 32 kids in them. Sorry, just wanted to be clear. But there are two half-day sessions. But again, the parity is closest that I've seen in, Mrs. Terry, I'm sure you'll see as well, it's pretty amazing this year, going into next year. So this has always been a school committee number-one charge, number-one goal, number-one mission for them to make sure that we have what they consider reasonable class sizes. Now, obviously, if we have move-ins, things change, but we'll pay attention to that. Typically, move-ins don't all move into one grade. Okay? So the next slide, slide 13. This has really become our FY26 focus. As I've tried to share with you some of the other things, we've been able to try to fit within our budget with marginal or modest increases. But these were the two that were the biggest. Contractual obligations, $1.3 million. Keep in mind that contractual obligations on an annual basis are at least a million dollars. You know, we have close to 600 total employees. We run an increase of about a million dollars for all contractual obligations for the, for the people that we have. And then the employee benefits insurance. This is the one that was really throwing us for a loop. This was looking at a 28% increase for our health insurance going into next year. We're not alone. Our neighboring community too here increased, did a mid-year increase of 32%. So this is, and I know even for the town of Charlton, I know you have what you would consider a sizable increase as well for your insurance.
18% or something, is that what I...
Eight for the 40.
Eighteen, yeah.
Yeah. So that's roughly $2.1 million increase. Obviously, we didn't bring that in here. That would be a much different conversation for us if I was bringing in $2.1 million or asking the school committee to approve that for a budget increase for next year. So that was the initial, and you have parentheses there, 811-269. That I'm going to talk about on slide 14. So how did we work on bringing that down, bringing the $2.6 million down? We looked at all of our lines. Again, we knew the 4.73 of the overall operational budget was not going to be palpable for you or for the town of Dudley. So we tried to use our best numbers. Our governor's regional transportation reimbursement, we actually set it at 85%. So we're hoping that we come in 100. Again, that will change the assessment. The minimum made was $75 per student in the governor's budget. We're at 150 now. That will obviously change. That's doubled. We also have Mr. DeSantis's new Director of Finance and Operations in the audience here. And I'll introduce Ms. Nicole Enberg, who's also a member of the school committee who's here this evening as well. Mr. DeSantis, it was his first time to go through line by line. And basically, in essence, build a zero-based budgeting and look at every single line. So he was able to look at trends and stuff and make some adjustments with some of those lines. We are looking at the lower utility costs moving forward. We are still using attrition as a model to try to balance our budget. So we do have one full-time teacher that we're not going to fill that position for retirement. And then we have one district office clerk, which has been open for a little while now. We're not filling that position either. So that was able to yield about $811,000 off of the top. That's the work that you expect of us. That's the work we're going to do, okay? So now looking at slide 15, what do the big numbers look like now? Keep in mind, what you see in the bottom there is this does not include the capital costs. This only includes the operating, this is only the operating budget. So FY25 was 59,885. That was a 2.68 increase last year. FY26, our starting point, with the reduction of the 811,000 is 62028356, which is a 3.57% increase. Again, $2.1 million, even though that was good work on our part to bring it down by 811, there was more work for us to do. We did more work. Our insurance now is down to a 20% increase versus a 28% increase. So that's able to put some money back into the operating budget. And we also, again, negotiated some shared costs in there, which will also help out as well with our insurance costs for next year. So we were able to bring it down to by, to a 2.73% increase overall, or a $1.6 million increase for FY26. Okay? The next, the next slide 16 just really talks about next steps and recommendations about the Amazon funding and how to use the Amazon funding. I think that's important. We're really, the school committee's really, you know... Consensus could be, conventional wisdom could be, Stephen Lamarche could say, it doesn't matter. I could say that, you know, let's use it to offset the operating budget. School committee, rightfully so, said, no, this is money that we're receiving. Let's use it for something that is going to benefit our students specifically and targeted. And so therefore, they're recommending it that does go towards instructional materials. We're on a rotation. The school committee just approved a curriculum adoption review plan, a multi-year plan. So we're on a rotation for that, and the Amazon money is the target for, to help fund that. Okay?
Through the chair. I don't think we could say it could be used for operating money. I think it was directed from Amazon that it couldn't be used for operating. My...
It could be used costs associated with science, technology, STEM.
STEM, yeah.
So if I'm a STEM teacher, it could be used for that. Again, I, again, school committee had the wisdom. I use myself as an example to sacrifice on this, okay? But school committee had the wisdom to say, no, it needs to be used. This is, let's call it special funding, whatever. It needs to be targeted for something, yes. It's annual one-time money. Let's target it for something more meaningful, and let's implement it into some type of a plan, and that's what we did.
Annual one-time money for 10 years, Andrew?
10 years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Unless Charlton negotiates something more for us, but no pressure. Slide 17. You could guess. I know Mrs. Terry could easily guess. I left this blank through our presentations, because I think we're bringing in a reasonable budget. So I didn't list the things that we have in mind that we could reduce. So if you, as a community, said, no, we don't accept our assessment, we need you to reduce the budget. Again, I think we're at the point now, after the last couple of years, that most people could identify what those things may be, because we don't have a lot of fluff in the Dudley-Chelton budget. We really don't. So I purposely didn't put it there, because I just wanted to create that hysteria again, that annual, you know, me kind of thing, because that's, it's important that we have a stable year after the past five years, okay? Especially budget-wise. So that brings us to slide 18, which is the assessment. Now, this assessment was adjusted and voted again on April 9th by the school committee. There was an adjustment. There was a question at the Dudley Board of Selectmen regarding the Shepherd Hill Field debt exclusion. It provided Mr. DeSantis a chance to go in and dig back for year over year, to take a look at what that actually was. And so there was a slight adjustment to that, to that assessment. So we did lower our budget by roughly $9,000 overall because of that. So the assessment for the town of Charlton comes in as a total of $20,259,168, or a 9% increase. And again, that includes capital for the budget. And keep in mind that some of your assessment is going up because of the economic development that you had, and that's the change between the two communities, the difference between the two communities. A couple of other things, if I, any questions on that? Okay. Couple of other things I want to point out, because I've heard some of this, and I just want to make sure that people are fully aware of this with the House budget that came out today. I didn't hear the questions from the House budget today, but I've heard these questions over time, so I want to address them. So, for example, the House budget does fund free lunch again for next year, okay? I think that's a, that's a win all the way around for everybody. The other thing, too, is the House, and you'll see a lot of focus on rural aid, that there's an increase in rural aid. The House has it at $7 million. I think the governor may have had it around $16 million. Dudley and Charlton do not qualify for rural aid, but I've had people ask me that question, so I just want to make sure that I cover that. We don't, rural aid is calculated based off of the residents and the residents within a square mile of where they live. So we don't, we don't qualify for that, either town. I mean, again, I just want to read what was written around, regional transportation funded has been split between the regular line and the new line. So there's two lines in there, for FY26 at 100%, but it does require $15 million from the FY25 budget supplemental to make that work. So again, we have to wait for that to come out. But again, if that comes, any increases in assessment, per pupil assessment, transportation assessments, we'll come back to you. We don't, we don't have a special bank account that we set up that we were way off on that. We come out with the new assessment sheets, okay? Any questions on FY26? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. DeSantis and Mr. Karen to come up and to talk about the capital improvement plan. This is not rolling out today. We're not asking for money today on this, but we try to develop a plan for this for the schools reflective of the two communities that we're in, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Lamarche.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, I'm Joe DeSantis. I'm the Director of Finance and Operations for Dudley-Chelton Regional School District. So I'm just going to give a brief overview, and then I'll pass it to Mr. Karen to speak more in depth on the assessment itself. So in May of 2024, Habibin Associates was contracted to conduct a facilities condition assessment and student capacity report, as approved by the towns of Dudley and Charlton on all seven schools within the Dudley-Chelton Regional School District. The facilities condition assessment was developed to address the physical structure, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire, fire protection, sewage disposal systems of all schools and their surrounding areas. The assessment describes current conditions and provides priority recommendations, as well as budget estimates for repair or replacement of the deficient building components and systems. This facilities report is intended to be used for short and long-term capital planning. The goal being to utilize the assessment in context with facilities goals as defined by Dudley-Chelton Regional School District for the development of a 10-year capital plan. The facilities condition assessment summarizes DCRSD's aging infrastructure on a per-school basis and graded the needs of each facility on a scale of immediacy. As part of the district's response to the facility assessment, the facilities director, Joe Karen, along with the head custodians of each school, organized each school's needs and projected these needs into the 10-year capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan tries to remain cognizant of factors such as projected order of operations, avoiding reoccurring administration costs, and project need immediacy. It's also worth noting that IT capital needs, which were not in the facilities condition assessment, have been added to the capital improvement plan as certain IT infrastructure needs are considered capital in nature and fall out... and fall outside of the scope of our general operating budget. Each item within the capital improvement plan you'll see is numbered to correlate to the specific area within the facilities condition assessment. So, I'll pass it to Mr. Karen to speak in further detail.
Hello. Joe Karen, Director of Facilities. So, the two documents we have, we have the facilities condition assessment, and then, we have the ten-year capital plan. I'll speak to the process a little bit, maybe repeat a little bit what Joe said. But, Habibin Associates, they were, you know, we went out to bid. They were contracted. They essentially sent a team of three architects, one school at a time, spending approximately twenty-four labor hours in each school. They scoured the schools. This was during the summer break. So, there's no kids, no distractions. They went through, as you're gonna see as we go through this report together, I'll give you a little short review. There's pictures to back up. They give little blurbs on each line item, and we can get to that. As Joe mentioned, you'll see their cost estimates on the deficiencies found there. And what we did, they had it on a scale of, you know, one, two, or three for as a priority. We broke that out and spread it out over a ten-year period. So, if we kind of want to turn to page twenty-eight on the facilities assessment, you can see an example of a school, which I believe that one's gonna be Charlton L. So, as it starts, it gives you a nice summary, split in the ages of certain infrastructures, you know, square footage, things of that, what the heating, cooling systems are, what the sewage and water systems are. And as you go through the report, it's gonna be assembled by school. So, as you move forward a page ahead, you'll see their building summary on page thirty on the left. They organize all the deficiencies, as Joe spoke to the numbers. All number ones will be your site problems. All number twos, your building envelope. Your threes, your building interiors. Four is mechanical. Five is electrical. But, if you look on our capital plan, we added a category six, which are gonna be the equipment that we use. So, think like field mowers, snow removal equipment, carpet machines, floor machines that throughout the district are mostly twenty-five years old or slightly older. So, we're end-of-life of those as well. And then, also, category seven would be your IT needs that Joe spoke to that were added. As we move through, we can see, if we skip ahead ten pages, obviously, you're gonna have all those categories, what they found, a little blurb of each. But, if you skip ahead to, say, page forty, you'll see where they, or forty-one, rather, you'll see where they back up almost every line item with a picture so that you can have an idea of what they're talking, what they're speaking to, and what cost estimates they are using there. So, it gives you a pretty detailed report here to cross-reference to. So, what we did with the ten-year capital plan, which is your stapled packet, all those numbers are kept and correlate directly back to the report. So, if you turn to page five of the ten-year capital plan packet, once again, it brings us to Charlton Elementary School. And if you look at the pictures, starting again at page forty-one, you will see, you know, one-point-one directly correlates to one-point-one on this page. So, you can cross-reference back and forth between these two documents.
Scope one, two, and three, was that the priority?
So, on the buildings assessment, yeah, they had scope one, two, and three, kind of like immediate.
Priority.
That was their way of prioritizing. You know, like immediate, intermediate, and then, you know, should be done, but not that much emergencies is the way they characterized it.
Okay.
But, obviously, the scope ones are rather high for all our schools. So, we had to, you know, try to make it more reasonable over a ten-year period.
Right. And prioritization is something that Joe and the head custodians had at the forefront of their mind as we're developing the ten-year plan. Obviously, the higher, more immediate needs are going to be our primary focus to start. So, Joe and his team did a really good job categorizing that over a ten-year period.
So, if you want to go back to the ten-year capital plan, page four is a totals page for the town of Charlton. And then, after this page, you will, you will see the individual schools' plans laid out. But, this total page kind of gives you a quick snapshot. And as Joe was speaking to the priority in the first few years are obviously roofs and heating systems, which at all our schools are the newest ones, are twenty-five years old, other than the middle school, of course, that has a brand-new roof. Some key points for consideration as they're marked at the end of the totals here, as well as at the end of each school. We can quickly review some together if you, if you wish. But, looking at some of the really high years, like two-thousand-twenty-nine, a wonderful Heritage School. If you turn to pages seventy-six in the report, assessment, yes. You will see areas two-point-five with the deteriorating cinder block veneer wall on the outside. We're getting water infiltration since the building has been built. So, we're seeing, if you see the white staining on the brick, we're getting efflorescence and having wall problems there. And the projected costs are rather high to fix that. And that's where you're seeing that big, huge project in two-thousand-twenty-nine at Heritage. That doesn't mean it's gonna end up being that bad, but, you know, some destructive testing when you get to that point to see what is actually happening on that frame will determine the scope of the project. But, preliminary, that's their estimate.
Yikes. Is Heritage older than the middle school?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is really comprehensive and great.
Yeah.
Did it go into the operating cost impacts of capital improvement? So, when I see things like voice-over-IP systems or upgraded HVAC, that's gonna come with upscaling our custodians, upscaling our technology support folks. Did we go into that at all?
It did not. I mean, as each project, if, if, you know, we get funded for, obviously, we're gonna have to go out to architect firms to build project scope, project review, recommendations on what we can do as a school district in those individual buildings for each scope of work. So, that's something that's gonna be developed project to project. This is, I like to call it a very fluid document because, obviously, we can't say that a priority ten years from now won't be moved up to something we need to do in five years. So, we're gonna, this is gonna be fluid. One of the things I like to mention is you never know what we're gonna be allowed to do as well. When we go to the state, if we go for a grant to replace a heating system, they're not gonna want us to put oil heat in again. They're gonna have green projects that are gonna want us to electrify. That costs is unknown because we'd have to update the, our electrical supply. And, you know, it snowballs from there. So, we can't really say that this is a direct cost or say this is more of replacement cost if we replaced in kind right now.
How frequently do we do assessments of this magnitude as a district?
I've only been in the district for three years. I can't say we've ever done one.
Okay.
I didn't have access to any previous ones through, you know, looking through old paper.
This has been something that we have been talking about for eight years that I know of. So, I'm- It's great. I'm thrilled with how comprehensive it came out. I think it was, you did a great job. And I have a question. We have talked as the Board of Selectmen, as the Finance Committee, as the School Committee, a lot about capacity of the buildings for students, and does that come into play with any of this conversation?
Sorry for neglecting it, but not my, not my area of focus. But, the beginning part of this report is a student capacity report.
Okay.
Highly detailed as well. I'm probably not the best one to speak to it.
That's fine. I don't mind reading it off hours here.
But, it's, it's very comprehensive as well, and I think they were going off of, you know, square footage is off of Desi's recommendation for learning areas. And it kind of all comes together on a report on page thirteen.
Okay.
A spreadsheet, as well as they have like little mini-maps about how actually each room in the school after that, throughout the pages after thirteen, about how each area is used and whether that's in the recommended square footage of Desi.
Okay. Thank you.
So, to answer your question, yes. Okay, that was a long yes, but-
I appreciate it. And I know this is like probably shell-shocking for, it is for me, even though I knew it was coming. But, I still think it's fantastic for all of us in this room to plan, at least have an idea of what might come at us.
Yeah. I don't know how much time you want to take. I mean, we can go through some other individual years if you wish. Yeah. If you want. Totally, I mean, there's a lot to take in, so.
It's up to you, but I personally would like to read this.
Yeah.
Digest it. Digest it.
Yeah, it's a lot to digest right now.
Yeah.
Hi. If I could share a couple of other points, I really appreciate the work and presentation. One thing is we're targeting twenty-twenty-seven as a starting point. This, the goal here was to give you all this information and start working next year on what a plan could be for the community as well as for the town of Dudley as well from there, from the, from the financial perspective. Or, so, twenty-twenty-seven, maybe push to twenty-twenty-eight? I don't know. We'll, we'll take a look at that. But, the important part was to give you this information upfront and for Joe and Joe to boil it down to a usable ten-year plan instead of having people keep, this is on our website, but having people keep go through and read that. We are going to, because of the high cost for Heritage next year, we are gonna, if it's, if it opens, we're gonna apply for an MSBA grant for Heritage to see if we can get folded into, pulled into that program. We're gonna file again for Shepherd Hill next year as well. But, Heritage, because of what was discovered here and the, and the high cost, you know, again, for you as a community, if you look at the total bill for Charlton right now, and that includes the Shepherd Hill, that's a ninety-four-million-dollar ten-year plan. But, if we can work with MSBA and get Heritage pulled in for the reasons that they will go through, and I want to be, I want to be cautious. Heritage won't be, there's no decision to be made as to whether we're gonna raise it, refurbish it, rebuild it, whatever. That has to, once you get pulled into the MSBA program, you have to go through every single phase of that. There's no single way of looking at it. So, next year, we are, our intent is to apply for that. But, this year was, this, this year in this meeting was to try to give you this information so you can have it, and you can at least digest it to a certain extent. And then, we will certainly come back next year, but we want to work with town leaders and start working on what a, what a good plan is for the community for next year as well.
Steve, and that, that MSBA, that's the same one that didn't pass, right? Last year for Shepherd Hill, that's the same one?
Correct.
Well, part, Phase One passed. Phase One, time review, it passed.
Yeah. But, feasibility didn't pass. Usability.
Yeah. But, this would be a Charlton vote only, though, right?
I'm sorry?
This would be a Charlton vote only for Heritage.
Heritage would be a Charlton-only vote, yes.
It also goes, for people that may be watching this at home, it should be noted that Heritage School far outweighs the cost for the Shepherd Hill.
Correct.
And we thought Shepherd Hill was the problem site. So, this is so valuable for information for us to digest.
It was an eye-opener.
Yeah. That veneer, the veneer block and the heating, cooling system for Heritage, the heating, cooling system in particular is very antiquated. It's, it's water-supplied heat pumps, and each room in that school has its own heat pump. So, for us even to repair or replace those systems, because they're starting to fail, it's about fifteen thousand dollars for each heat pump, and there's about seventy-eight of them in that school. So, it's, it's a system that wouldn't be put in today. It was probably cutting-edge at the time, but it's, you know, many years away from when it was established.
Is it, does it say in here, what year was Heritage built?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-seven, eighty-eight, I think, was construction and opened in eighty-nine, I believe, but-
Yeah.
And I think that stuff isn't-
Given the scope of the repairs that are needed, have you done any preliminary work on alternate spaces for education during, during the school year? Because this isn't gonna get done in the summer.
We're gonna work, we have to work on that, and we also have to work on the enrollment part of that as well, and what that looks like for capacity within our schools.
Yeah. I just don't think we're there yet on that conversation. It really depends on, you know, as Steve said, do we get in the MSBA pipeline? What would be the process there? Are we doing a year-to-year capital plan and picking off projects one at a time?
To make that transportation contract even more important. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the last thing I want to say, too, is you'd be, I'm sorry to keep on, I feel like a little kid. The last thing is, when you go into our schools, you'd be amazed by the cost of this stuff because our schools look fantastic. And that, that's a huge credit to our custodians. They worked tirelessly to make our schools look really good. And that goes a long way, especially when you file for MSBA. That goes a long way. Are we maintaining our schools? Are we trying to let them go so MSBA will pick us up? But, it's a compliment to, to our two communities and to our custodians. Our schools look fantastic. They are safe, but there are places that need some, need to be addressed. There's no question about it.
One other, given the age of the buildings, have we considered all ADA upgrades in these numbers as well, too?
They are, the ADA projects are in there. And in fact, if we start making improvements to the building in the state of Massachusetts, once you invest so much money on, based on the value of the building, those are gonna kick in where they have to be done at a certain point anyways, as well as fire and sprinkler upgrades and things of that manner that are not currently in all the schools.
Thank you for taking the time to spell this out for us.
And like Steve mentioned, both of these documents are on the website. So, anybody can go look at them, and they're shared.
Have these been sent out to the families, parents and families? Do you intend to do that?
We intend, we're setting up a place on our website that, it already has this on the website, but we're trying to, with School Board's approval of our curriculum plan, our capital plan, technology plan, we're trying to put a place there, and I was going to send out a link.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I, just to add on to what you said about the great job that our custodians do, we're not just talking about the school day either. Our facilities are used, weekends, nights, for sports, activities, concerts, events. And the custodians are doing a fantastic job. But, these schools are not twenty-four hours a day, but eighteen, maybe.
They're good community-based schools.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other question, comment?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you started with really good news, and then, you ended up with-
That's the sandwich.
We're missing a break.
You can't fall asleep tonight.
No. I have to coffee up for that one.
It's awesome. I chaired the committee for-
Eighty-nine, we wouldn't think it needed that much, but I guess. Money to get into the heating system, even building itself.
Oh, it's awesome. Thirty-one million. Eighty-eight, I'm doing a fifteen-million-dollar ADA.
Yeah.
Forgiveness.
Yeah.
So, I guess we'll start with budget.
Absolutely.
All right. So, before we start going into all the articles, kind of just drop right down to essentially what would be. Yeah.
Article eight.
Article eight. Thank you. Don't remind myself which article number it was. So, just an overview. I know this is kind of the, you know, rehash of a lot of the stuff that we've gone through in the numbers, but just kind of going through with the, you know, formal presentation on it. So, just an outline first of essentially our operational considerations and the new personnel requests that we went through as we were developing this budget. We had to take into consideration the new growth from the industrial projects using the conservative projections to try to maximize our long-term, you know, sustainability as it relates to this, to this budget process. We're taking on the partial debt service and debt exclusion costs for the new construction of the fire station. This will be kind of the first year. Next year will be more of a ramp-up year for that, for those costs. We're also taking on the debt service for the landfill cap. So, those are within this, this operational budget. The fire and DPW union contracts, they're due for renewal going into this next year. We're just starting, starting those negotiation process right now. We've entered into a tentative agreement right now with the police union contract. Right now, those numbers are still kind of living in elsewhere in the operational budget. So, these numbers will be adjusted prior to the final numbers to make sure that they're in their, their right home. We've included the nine percent DCRSD school assessment as presented- We've included the nine percent DCRSD school assessment as presented tonight. Included market level cost of living adjustments for the non-union personnel, and adjusted for the nineteen percent increase in health insurance costs. And overall, we've presented an operational budget that manages the, the growing needs of the community. As far as personnel requests that we have included in the budget include a new administrative sergeant position in the police department, an eighth dispatcher for the police department, a fire department EMS officer. A increase to the part-time building department assistant from part-time to full-time, and administrative assistant twenty-four hours for council on aging, that's just, that's an hourly rate adjustment. Request that weren't included in the budget for this year was the request for a deputy EMD position in the fire department and a teen services assistant for the library. In terms of revenue, this is a projected three point eight-two percent increase over prior year, total tax levy increasing by five point three-four percent. State receipts, we similarly received the state numbers again, unlike the schools, the unrestricted local government aid actually went down a little bit for us than what was projected. But we feel very confident that our local receipt estimates were still conservative enough that we'll be able to make those adjust, those projected adjustments within there. Receipts reserved for appropriation, we did make some adjustments to that, we did start to reduce some of our reliance on ambulance receipts and operations. Primarily that was to try to make sure that the next time that we go out for an ambulance, given that ambulance costs increased, that we had enough in that account to fund that capital item when it comes up next. And then charges against revenue, that's really a number that is part of that cherry sheet aid, we're gonna double-check those numbers, make sure that those are accurate based off of the house numbers. This is just a projection of essentially our revenue over time. Essentially, the, who shares the tax burden slide shows how with the increase with industrial projects throughout town, there's been less of a reliance on the residential burden. So back in twenty twenty-three, the residential burden of the tax bill was about seventy-seven point nine percent, and FY twenty-five, that's dropped down to seventy-one point four percent. And as you see, the local receipts have, over time, well-outpaced our budgeted estimates. But a big contributor to that has been the permit fees that we had gotten through the Amazon project, so that project's over, we're gonna kind of see a reconciliation as to, as to where we're at. We still think that we're still meeting, gonna be meeting our target goals. Just showing here, our new growth residential versus commercial, so you can see where residential growth has been relatively stable over time. Our commercial, industrial, and personal property has been a little bit more of a jump over the last few years, and that's really kind of shown out with our, with our new growth. That's then turned over to our excess levy capacity, where, you know, for years and years over time, we've essentially budgeted to very penny of every dollar that we could. In the last two years, we've kind of been able to shift that, where in twenty twenty-four, we had about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in excess levy capacity. And this last year, we have over a million dollars in excess levy capacity. So we're trying to continue to remain very conservative with our estimates, so we can try to stay up there and, you know, show essentially the taxpayers that we are not charging the total amount that we could and try to keep the money back in their own pockets. Just some highlights of the expenditures, so general government aid, this is, or general government, this is a level service budget with no new positions that are being added. With the exception that the, with the reserves being held in HR just for the settling of the police, fire, and DPW union contracts. Again, we'll adjust those now that we have some clear numbers with one of those unions. Public safety, this is a funding increase right now of eleven point three percent, which includes that new administrative sergeant and emergency telecommunications, as well as increased in software maintenance and radio system maintenance costs. For the fire department EMS, that funding's increased three point eight percent. This includes the addition of the EMS officer and pro, projected two percent price increases for overall operational costs. And for the building inspectional services, this increase is that transition from the part-time department assistant to a full-time, a department assistant. Education, overall, the DCRSD, their budget is a three point nine percent increase, but the assessment increase is about eight point nine percent, so one point seven million dollars over FY twenty-five. Public works is only a point six percent increase, essentially it's pending that union contract negotiation, which we'll know more, you know, later on in the year. But we're keeping snow and ice removal level funded at two hundred and three thousand five hundred, it's essentially a number that we keep stagnant pretty much year after year. Human services, as far as the council on aging budget, we have increased five point three percent, that's staffing and programmatic improvements. One thing is that the town will be transitioning its meal service exclusively to Tri-Valley elder services, so there'll be no cost for, for preparing food, and we're transitioning that to more operational and needs for that department. Essentially reallocating those savings to increase the activities assistant position that's twenty-four hours per week. For the library budget, it's an increase of three point eight percent, that's to meet the municipal appropriation requirement and did not include the proposed teen services librarian position. Old Home Day was fun, was a funding increase of twenty-five hundred dollars to address their concerns with donations. Debt service, that was an increase of fifty-three point four percent, primarily driven by the new bond issuances for both the fire department substation and the landfill capping projects. And finally, retirement and insurance, the big driver there, retire, healthcare costs increased by nineteen percent, which contributed to an overall increase of eight point seven percent in benefits and pension contributions. So you see where education right now is about fifty-one point eight percent of our overall spending cost, with public safety behind that seventeen percent, and retirement and insurance at thirteen point four. The next few slides pretty much just go over line by line between salaries and expenditures for, for each department. Overall, general government is a seven percent increase over the prior year, but again, that includes that baby increase that's being held in human resources for the, for the settling of the union contracts. Public safety overall, seven point two percent increase, again, pen, pending those contractual obligations. Just put this slide together real quick on, on the schools, showing essentially a three percent increase in the Bay Path assessment, and nine percent increase in the DCRSD assessment. Just showing overall, foundation enrollment, we have seen it kind of start to level off from its decline over time. But the assessment costs and transportation costs, they've, they've performed over time. And as far as the, the projection two of essentially that chapter seventy aid, which we're hoping that, you see that little bump that we finally got there? And FY twenty-six was that adjustment in the chapter seventy to go from, let's say, a hundred and five dollars per student. So now that we have a higher projected number in there, we should see at least a little bit more of a climb that might match our actual increases in actual net school spending in our assessment. Public works, point seven percent, so they're basically a level fund from the prior year. Board of Health assessments, three, or, uh, human service assessments, three point five percent, culture and recreation, also three point nine. Our debt service, this is kind of the breakdown of all our outstanding debt, essentially going from six hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the prior year to nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars going into this next year. With those big drivers being the substation and the landfill cap, with some interest costs on the pending engine replacement. But you do see that we have the highway facility, engine one, Maynard Field, and the fire tanker truck all drop off last year. So the new debt being brought on offsets those, those costs. Just going back, you can just see a projection here of how we see our debt service performing over time based off of the obligations that we've made. And finally here, as far as operations, is the retirement and insurance, overall an eight percent increase, so Worcester Cat Retirement is going up eight point five, general insurance four point five, group health insurance nineteen point two. And Medicare at nine point five percent, and I know OPEB right now is, shows a reduction, really that reduction is at annual town meeting, we've gone in at a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, you know, request, and then look to supplement that fall. So this just compares our projected revenues, essentially projecting a forty-four million dollar budget against our requested expenditures. Essentially it being a three point eight-two percent increase in revenue, a total expenditure increase of six point three percent. And then finally, our end-of-year capital and free cash allocations. So just as a closeout, we're just gonna address some immediate needs as far as capital, since we were, kept a million dollars in free cash, so looking to see kind of what, what came up, we could supplement prior to going into the fall, so. Board of Health, there's solid waste requirements, this was, been an article that we carried about a year and a half ago. They're, they gave us an updated projection as far as what they'll need to get through the next year to really deal with some of the closeout monitoring maintenance around our landfills. That's estimated about three hundred and sixty thousand, fire department, a hundred thousand dollars for some station one improvements, mainly for windows siding, gutter replacements as well, while as rebuilding the entrance and making it ADA compliant. For the library, replacement of the HVAC chiller. We have two projects here that are essentially grant matches, one is for green community weatherization that we have as a pending grant right now. So if we were to get that grant for about two hundred thousand dollars, our match would be about thirty thousand, so we're budgeting for that. And we're also working on the number two schoolhouse right now, one cost that was significantly higher than what we were originally projection, projecting was guano and pigeon feces abatement. And so we're looking to supplement that cost by about forty thousand dollars, so that way we can get that project done. And finally, our snow and ice deficit, when we put this together, we weren't anticipating getting six inches of snow on Saturday, so we're gonna just revisit this number to make sure it's still accurate, but we're carrying two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to offset that. Total would be seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, leaving two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of free cash to roll over into next year. So that is overall of everything that we're looking at here, I think I gave you guys basically a ninety-nine-page summary of all that stuff as a presentation, but we'll answer any questions you guys have.
Excellent.
Was this all plugged from ClearGov?
No, that's another thing, so going into, so going into next year, we have decided to not continue with ClearGov.
Okay.
Essentially, based off the cost of the solution, the amount of stuff that we were able to pull from it, and some major changes that they made to the overall working of it, we decided to, to go kind of back to. Spreadsheets, you know, basically the Excel.
The spreadsheets are easier than ClearGov at this point, because they combined everything into one, I can't separate funds, so water, sewer, it all lives together, and that does not how it flies, so. It was way too much to work around, to get the departments to work around, I'd rather just do the spreadsheets, it was faster than having to, because we have to fix that every year, and it was a lot of workaround, Andrew went in and tried, and it was not easy.
So we, we kind of just did all this by hand.
Yeah.
It came out amazing, nice job.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was a touch from ClearGov. That's, Andrew loves this, that's all Andrew, I just didn't. I see him in the numbers, he makes it look pretty.
Cybersecurity nerd in me says they'll make sure that we have proof of destruction of our data when we move away from there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, all the data that's in there is public record anyway, but, yes, so I think you have a call with them.
Yeah.
So.
I thought you plugged it, so thanks job, yeah.
Thank you. No, it, um, it was not an easy workaround this year, so, spreadsheets are fun.
Any other questions or comments? Nice work.
Thank you. So I don't know if you guys want to go through, if you have no questions on budget, do you want to go through and make your motion, the recommendations on the warrant?
I have a question on the budget.
Go for it.
Just one quick question. Under the, um, the police department budget? There was an ask for Old Home Day?
Yes.
Of eight, eight thousand dollars?
Theirs is only two.
And we recommended two?
So, oh, you asked for, I think, seven?
You asked?
Correct, so we agreed to two, Old Home Day, so we were gonna give, FinCom asked to give Old Home Day ten, because they asked for twenty-five, we used to give them fifty-five hundred. So FinCom recommended to give them ten, and talks with the chief. Well, so in talks with the chief, because he now has to also supply all the details for it, they don't pay him, so we split, we gave, he agreed to take two, and then Old Home Day will get the eight, so that's where, so eight.
Oh, and you're okay with that?
Yeah, so it's still ten.
Certainly helps.
So.
Yeah, but that, but that's a recurring, that's a recurring cost of the year. Now that, now that it's.
Five days or two, I mean, we're not alone, this fires takes a burn on that day, and highway does, so it's just, that, that was sort of to clear up the road race and to bring in people, because somebody made a, a comment that, that the road race was a private event, shouldn't be compensated by the town.
Yeah.
So that was sort of offset that, that utilized that money to cover the details of it, or they had turned that timeframe.
So rather than making Old Home Day try to pay him, I just split the funds, it's all the same pool of money, so rather than make them try to pay him, I'd rather just split the funds.
I think it was more the road race payment, not Old Home Day.
Right.
They're separate.
Yeah, so he'll, he can take care of, and I know we had an issue now where you can't just make people come in with all the post requirements, so it's harder.
Yeah, I know, right.
With the union, you're gonna have to pay people to come in, so he gets the two, that will cover him, and then Old Home Day will get the eight, so they split the ten.
That's why it got more expensive, because of clothes, he can't just, he had volunteers before and all different types.
Right. So that was recommendation for finance committee, so we could split it.
But the fire still stands with the Old Home Day budget, how, how you go?
So I don't know how you, I'm assuming you have vol.
You just absorb it at this point?
So.
The police chief has given me a great idea of next year.
So that's where that came in.
All right, that was my only question, I just wanted, because I knew there was, sitting in on a few Old Home Day committee meetings, I knew there was a concern to dance.
Yeah.
And a, and a good one.
Does anybody else have any more questions for budget?
All right, um, I don't care how you want to handle them, but if you want to go through and make recommendations on all the money-related ones that have. I guess we can skip.
First, there can't.
Yeah, so skip, skip article one.
Yeah.
And then two through four, two through thirteen, if you want to make recommendations on, if you want to take them line by line, doesn't matter.
Do I have to read them out in totality like we do at town meeting?
No, you can just go through and.
Motion, motion to support article two.
Okay. Second, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that finance committee supports article two.
He was telling me what to say, but, okay, all right.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to board of selectmen to support article two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that the finance committee supports article three.
Second. All in favor?
Make a motion to board of selectmen to support article three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that the finance committee supports article four.
Second.
Can I have that?
Sorry.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
This is a, a bill that was not paid during the year?
It was found after October town meeting, I think, I don't remember if they sent us a statement, or I went online and somehow found it. So every department gets their own bills, and it must have just slipped, I think there's like two of them.
Does that impact our credit if we miss something like that?
No.
Are there late fees in there? Okay.
And even if there are, we don't pay, we don't pay late fees, so, but no, there are not, so.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, um, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to BOS supports Article four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article five.
Second. All in favor?
Make a motion that BOS supports Article five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that BOS supports Article six.
Second.
All in favor?
So just so you guys know, in case you get asked, the four hundred dollars that's in there, I know it's small and people probably aren't going to care, but what happened was our sewer vendor had a detail and for whatever reason, the check got taken into sewer retained earnings and not paid to police outside detail. So the only way for me to clean it up is to have it in here, so it's just moving of, it's sitting there, so I'm just going to take it out, we'll pay it and move it, and then police can knock their, um, two outstanding details out, so.
Noted, thank you. It's housekeeping.
It's just housekeeping, yeah.
And hopefully folks are watching and doing their homework, so we get that question.
That's my, the only way I am allowed to do it per DOR, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article seven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion that BOS supports Article seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion that BOS supports Article eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article nine.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion of BOS supports Article nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion that BOS supports Article ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article eleven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion that BOS supports Article eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the Finance Committee support Article twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion that BOS supports Article twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just so you know, Article thirteen there, there's no new revolving funds in there, they're all the same from prior year.
Okay. And I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion that BOS supports Article thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then Articles fourteen through twenty-two are all zoning, and I don't think either board takes a stance on zoning articles, so.
So are they at town meeting?
So yeah, somebody from planning should be on town meeting floor to, um... And I know Andrew just took out, so these were a lot longer, but they haven't held their public hearings on them yet, so the...
Yeah, the public hearings aren't scheduled until May sixth, then obviously we have to have the warrant posted before then, so if there's any changes, we don't want that to be, this is the article that's going to be considered, and then all of a sudden there'd be changes to that being considered on the floor. So we tried to paint essentially the four corners of the article that could come up, and then when we print the booklets, we'll have them as appendix for each article.
Oh, that's smart.
Yeah, so that, that way if there's changes, the appendix can change, but once you post the articles, the articles can't change, so it would make town meeting too confusing if we had it the other way, so.
Great. We can move on to any other business? And/or your update?
So the only update I have, um, which I don't have to put on the screen, but I did post online our FY twenty-four financials, which I presented to the board. I think their last, not last, but the meeting before. Our financials are in a new spiffy report, um, the, the, it's a, uh, uh, annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, and just a fancier way to present our financials, so it makes it more, I guess, it's just better for the, for the community, and that's what the GFOA wants us to, how they want us to present it. So if you want to go online to the accounting page, it's on there, and I think I put it in the Dropbox for you guys to look at too. It's like a hundred and something pages long, there's some nice pictures in there. And hopefully, fingers crossed, that, um, will, it's an, uh, presentation that can win an award. So hopefully in like six months, we'll get a nice plaque with an award, and then this is now how we'll do our financials going forward every year, so.
Excellent.
We're going to try to submit the budget for an annual award as well.
Excellent.
With our, the presentation that we gave to you guys last time. So I think Andrew updated a little bit, but, so hopefully we'll get some, hopefully we'll get at least one. Hopefully, and if not, we're going for two, so.
That's black. That's all I have.
Yep.
The rest is plugging away, getting ready for year end, so. Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent, excellent job, nice presentation too.
Really. Okay, motion to adjourn? Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great job.